Pardon me, the board, please rise for the plaintiff.
With allegiance to the Friday of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is May 11th, welcome everyone, time roll call.
Where is Aaron?
Here.
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Capros?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Is there any for the audience that we should do a press report? If not, time approach your work.
The only thing I have is tax income fees since the last meeting, this is only for a two week period. So it's sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-one cents. And the state appears to be catching up with the income tax again.
Village Commission, Refugiation Commission, trustee here.
We have a meeting tomorrow evening here at the village hall at seven o'clock. And we are starting to print our flowers throughout the village. And if you would like to attend, please do so.
For the July Commission, trustee Coleman.
Yes, the Fourth of July car has arrived. A 2015 Chevy Camaro from Raleigh Chevrolet. Work is continuing on, on the beer stand. Probably another couple of weeks will kind of wrap things up.
And I don't know if you know, but the tickets came today.
Yes, sir.
So we had the tickets, so. Youth Commission, trustee Kupbers.
No events to report, I'm just be on the lookout for painful mingles and I'll leave it at that.
Yep, ripping up hope.
Trustee Whelan.
There's nothing to report.
Historic Preservation, trustee Whelan.
We have not had a first meeting yet, so.
I'm gonna go ahead and go into what the finance administration committee, trustee Clary, you can go ahead and start.
Kim, Treasury report.
Okay, we have a full agenda tonight, so I can make this pretty quick. April was really a non-eventful month, it's not a tax or a water month. So if you look at your changes in your accounts, basically what you're seeing is the operational or payroll effects without really offsetting income that we'll be getting later on, so. That's basically what went on, nothing unusual, but what went on in the village accounts for last April through the April month end. Our commissions, the Fourth of July, we had some checks clear. I think the car was probably in there, that was the big one, so. Like I said, nothing unexpected, just our usual April, which is basically the bottom of our hill, so to speak, as we move up and down the cycle throughout our year. If we flip to the graph, you'll see both the village account and the general fund. It's a year over year, the numbers are year over year there, so. We're slightly under overall in the village accounts last year, this year. But general is slightly up, so. I guess village account wise, a predictable and good year. That is our year end. The balances will be audited, audit time here in the next couple of months. So I don't think we have anything unexpected or unusual to look at, but we'll see, that's always an event. And finally then we have our commission bills and our other AP payments that took place during April. Primarily. Well, if you look, Fourth of July, like I said, the car was the big clearing one here. A number of other things are starting to happen as we approached the Fourth. And the rest is payroll oriented for the most part, our heritage fuel payment. Paid some bills for the newsletter and our monthly refuse payment, so. These are the bills that need your approval outside of the AP. And other than that, if there's any questions, I would end my report.
Just a question, is that he's ever still self-sufficient? Does he ever have his company?
Is also the Fourth of July in or the 2015 budget? I make a motion approving the Treasury report for the month of April 2015.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Yes.
Whelan?
Yes.
The various reports for the month of March is also in there for our review. To give you an idea where we're at with our payments. And the bills were provided to us under, by email, and also any changes you're gonna see are gonna be involved for bills that were not available prior to signing. Anything you wanna talk about, Bob?
I'm looking here quick. No, you see that we've paid for all of the Quiet Zone study, the Quiet Zone is complete. They are reviewing the dollar numbers before they release the report to us. Excuse me, but the agreement was that we had to pay hundred percent of the Quiet Zone study on the old budget, so that's why we had a 275. And that will take care of that, out of the old budget, that was budgeted in the old budget. Other than that, I see nothing that pops out of the major.
Okay, any questions of the bills? Make a motion approving the bills for the month of April 2015 totaling ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Is it ninety-five, one twenty-nine, or ninety-five, two nineteen? There's two for the months.
He asked the box.
Ninety-five, twenty-nine, eighty-four.
Five, one, eight, four.
Correct, that is a transposition of numbers.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman? Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes.
Want to go any further?
Kim, go. Your committee.
Because it's a little strange that you guys haven't had it set up, it goes with video reports again. Concerning the authorizing of a bidding for coverage of cyber insurance, with a lot that's going on with the information that's held by the village, we want to make sure we have insurance to cover us since we take a lot of credit cards and we also have a lot of people's social security numbers, so. The amount of money that it covers is one million dollars. The overall cost per year, although this is not in one of our budget points, you're gonna need to find the spot for it, but it's two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Bob, any details you wanna add on this?
No, I think they don't should bind this coverage. It'll be prorated for this year, it's a calendar year policy, so the twenty-five days for a full twelve months. So we'll pay that full amount come January, but now we're just gonna pay it for a year.
Just a question, it's binding of coverage, not bidding, so it's good.
Binding, yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any questions to that motion? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whelan?
Yes.
And for your final report, what a reporter was. Public Buildings Properties, Parks and Recreation, trustee Whelan.
Golf field lighting installation, buddy?
Okay, well, the lights have been delivered. Right now, I'm just coordinating the lift, I have to do a little bit of making some brackets and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll be up and running.
Okay, then we'll be able to test them at night?
Yes, they'll all be tested, according to Mike, everything's in place, it should take us only three days and that'd be it.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
All right, just in time. Golf course update.
If you remember at the last meeting, I had indicated that someone had looked at the golf course. I think we can upgrade that to someone has interest in the golf course, and that's how we know. Apparently it's alive and well, we're keeping our fingers crossed, and maybe by next meeting, we'll be able to report something. But I think it's encouraging, it's not that, and by any means or in any way or form. So if somebody has interest, I think they may offer a contract and hopefully by the way they're maintaining it, that's an indication that it may open again this year. Although we have not received any definite word, but those are the indicators that we're seeing now.
I know we've gotten a lot of rain and it's been hard to mow, but what kind of schedule are we on as far as mowing, you know?
Greens are supposed to be three times a week where they're permitted. The fairways, we were told, they let grow as high as the roughs because they have problems with golfers out there playing. So you might see the fairways and the roughs actually equal in height. But they just have to keep it under eight inches. But it's awfully wet out there right now.
Yeah.
So I have a net. Planning Building and Zoning, trustee here.
Building Department, lovely, four to close for your review. Concerning an ordinance granting B3 zoning and special use permit for the storage and sales of agricultural equipment rear half of the young equipment parcel 383 South Dixie Highway. The petitioner wishes to construct a storage building on the site and rezone of the rear half of the parcel and a granting of a special use permit is required. At the hearing, the consensus of the neighborhood was to waive the requirement of a six-foot-high solid fence around the property. Some concerns about drainage and aesthetics were expressed, but overall, there was no objection to the request. The drainage plan was created by an engineer and then approved by the village engineer. So I'd like to make a motion, accepting ordinance number?
Twelve twenty-three.
Twelve twenty-three, granting B3 zoning and special use permit for the stores and sales of agricultural equipment in the rear half of the young equipment parcel located at 383 South Dixie Highway.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions to the motion? Under discussion, just as the petitioners here tonight knows the three conditions of review. No light trespass shall be allowed at the property lines of any existing residential. Drainage shall be installed as approved by the village engineer. And here's the third one, because the PCC recommended landscaping in lieu of a fence. And we are not requiring the six-foot-high fence around the back perimeter of the property. But we have in here, the property owner shall install landscaping along the property line as approved by the village president and village administrator in lieu of the six-foot fence required by zoning ordinance. Now, from what we took from the PCC meeting, that landscaping may be nothing more than grass because a hedge row was gonna block people's view from their front door. So that's probably what we're talking about, but that's what we put in there. This is chairperson, and request the village attorney that those three conditions be in this order.
Who's the engineer to review the?
Answer. And his report should be in the patent. Any other questions? Roll call.
Whelan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes.
Considering an ordinance granting a special use permit for a beer garden at the Pensantonic at 643 Dixie Highway. After hearing and deliberation, the PCC recommended approval of special use permit with seven conditions, which are contained in the ordinance and I will read out loud, or Bob, you want to do that?
Kim, go ahead. Time under review.
Okay. Due to the sale of alcohol, the outdoor seating area should be completely enclosed by a solid fence with access through a gate to control ingress and egress. Number two, access to the outdoor seating area shall be handicap accessible. Three, no banners or outdoor advertising will be placed on the outside, we require fencing to enclose the outdoor seating area. Number four, outdoor lighting shall be LED with a downward cast and avoid off-site glare. Number five, no glass shall be permitted in the outdoor seating area. And six, outdoor seating area shall close no later than midnight. And five, outdoor entertainment shall be permitted, providing sound is directed to the west ending no later than 11:00 PM and otherwise meeting village regulations related to noise. Okay, after discussion, the matter with some board members, they are still seen to be concerned regarding our outdoor noise with this beer garden. Some village board members have expressed a desire to close the beer garden earlier and to limit live entertainment by permit only issued during, issued jointly by the police, administrator, and liquor commissioner. Similar to the control placed on Basil, Basil Grove and Cardinal Creek Golf Course. With ambient music may be a concern, the petitioner will be present to respond to these concerns.
Before we let Jack respond, the nine conditions, which you read, Bill. The outdoor seating area shall close, I actually have nine in the ordinance. We have to come up with, after hearing several concerns, we have to come up with something that's palatable. Apparently the PCC recommendation for closure of midnight on the outdoor seating area seemed too late for some. And then the amplified sound for 11 o'clock seemed too late for some, so I left those two lines blank tonight so we can discuss with the petitioner what is amicable, closing time and what is an amicable time to stop the music. And I guess I'll leave it at that. Granted, whatever you come up with, the liquor commissioner can make more restrictive. But those two items I left blank in the ordinance. Also, the PCC felt that live entertainment could be unrestricted and played basically every night. Whereas in the past, we depart outdoor entertainment to have a special events permit issued by someone. And here, we're saying it could be liquor commissioner with the advice of the chief to issue that permit for special entertainment. So that's where we're at with this. Discussion.
And then that's too late, that was what the planning commission came up with?
Was that every night of the week? I mean, any night of the week?
Or is that just Fridays and Saturdays?
Was it, um, let's see?
Is that a recommendation of the best down, or was that a recommendation from?
No, it came from the PCC.
The outdoor garden should be left open till midnight, but the music's stopped at 11:00, is what they recommend.
Right.
And this is every night of the week? Or just Fridays and Saturdays?
No, it is.
No location?
What do you suggest if you thought it was too late?
I was just asking a question.
Well, you mentioned also it was too late, do you have another suggestion or no?
I thought that we talked about, doesn't the ordinance, I know there's a blank, but.
The, what had occurred was the attorney called to draft the ordinance, and Bob knew of some discussion amongst other trustees and village board members. So what Bob instructed the attorney was to leave that blank so we can decide tonight. You can accept their recommendation of someone wishing to make that motion, and second, and we can vote for voting that. If not, we can discuss it and change the times if we so please. So it's basically what.
I wanted your testimony from the order before I make a decision.
Do I have to be sworn?
No.
Testimony, comments?
Hi, my name's Jack Daley, it's my wife Karen. The plan isn't to be a seven-day-a-week live entertainment venue at all out there. But we wanted to be able to offer the opportunity to have some entertainment on the weekends primarily, or if there was a special event, if somebody wanted to have a charitable event or a political event, or something where they wanted to use the place either in the afternoon or on an evening, but again, I also talked with the mayor, and he may be quite aware the liquor commissioner's got a lot of latitude here on how late things would last, obviously, we're not gonna be playing live music till 11:00 on a weeknight. It's just, and it costs a lot to have live entertainment in there, so we're not gonna have it all the time anyway. But we would like to have something on the weekends, we've been doing since we've been open now, live entertainment inside the bar on Saturday nights and trivia contest on Friday nights, and that's been it for extra entertainment. I think when we came to the meeting, everybody thought we want to stay out there till the end of the license of live entertainment, and that's not the case at all. We want to start toning it down at a certain time so we can start moving them in and getting people back in. And I realize too, if we have music playing, people are drinking, they're gonna get louder, the voices will probably carry louder than the music. Well, I don't want that to happen, I want to make sure we're good neighbors there, and we're gonna keep it down. And I know we're under scrutiny all the time for what we're gonna do. I'm not gonna allow a place to be out of control. It's, that's, for those of you who know me, I've been a police officer for 34 years, I'm not gonna put up with that kind of crowd. I'm not gonna have a bunch of ungovernable people, we've already thrown a few people out of the bar. We called the police to get an attempted minor out of the bar the other night. We're not gonna play around with anybody that's gonna get either out of hand, and we haven't had anybody out of hand so far, the customers that have come in have been absolutely fantastic. And, but they know too, that we've already made two calls, that we won't put up with any nonsense at all. And whatever it takes, we just want to make it a nice place for the town. The town likes to be outside, we know that from how the Fourth of July event goes. It's certainly gonna help pay the mortgage on the property and give people a place to go to. But we want to be the best neighbors, not the worst neighbors, and we don't want to be a problem. And I don't want the mayor or the liquor commissioner calling me and hollering at me, guys, that's not gonna happen.
The one concern with the special use is it runs with the land, not with the owner. So once you grant this beer garden, it's there. And that was the other concern that the village attorney had, is you know, we're not issuing this to Jack, we're issuing it to the piece of property. And if Jack sells in a couple of years, then you still have this beer garden, which you have to deal with. So we have to keep that in mind too, it's not, it's a special use that runs with the property, not with the owner.
Would it be a temporary use or a trial period use?
Well, one of the conversations that I had with the trustee was, was that since we do not have any history of what would happen at this particular occasion, the way the sound would be or anything like that, is to go ahead and issue whatever you desire, and then we can always scale it back based upon the complaint, like they've said. I'm being constantly reminded that basically the ball could be in my court at some point in time, in which Jack and I recognize, you know, quite well that that's a possibility, and obviously anything that we vote today would be changed if any violations did occur. And the first violation or first, let's say complaint, would probably go through the police, and then we'd probably get word from the police that we are having problems and the noises is and that. At the same token though, the trustee also mentioned, like I'm sure the rest of us are, is we want to try and help the business succeed, you know, and be better than it has been in the past, and that's what we're struggling with right now, as well as being concerned about the noise going around with our residents and so on and so forth. For those that weren't at the meeting, Jack, if I can ask, what are you asking for? What times are you asking?
Yeah, what do you want, Jack?
I think we pretty much agreed at 11:00 with the planning board. I think a couple of the planning people thought maybe we should be a little later, especially on Friday nights, but nevertheless, we thought 11:00 for live music to be done. And if everybody come down for an hour afterwards, you know, if they're quiet, leave them outside with low music, like the jukebox with some ground speakers outside, not blaring music, just to get them through the place and start, because after that music ends, a lot of them are gonna exit anyway, they're there for the entertainment. And so I like the idea of being closed, you know, before, before 2:00 AM, I mean, 1:30, I want to be cleaning up and trying to get out of there if we can, because we're there all the time, we're there when the place is open, and it's not gonna be unmanaged, it's not gonna be unsupervised, it's either gonna be between Karen and myself, or my son Eddie, who's pretty much a general manager for the property. One of us is always gonna be on the campus when anything's going on. And right now, we're looking at one night a week scheduled live entertainment, and if the weather's bad, it's gonna come inside the bar, but it's, of course, obviously, that makes it a smaller venue for anybody to perform. And we've been very successful with the little bit of live entertainment we've had now for five weeks, Karen? We've had people in there, and it's catching on, it's getting better. I think they get louder during the Hawks game right now than they do during the, when we've had the music vendors and that, but. No way do we want to do anything that's gonna make this village look bad or have the neighbors upset with us. Believe me, we want to coexist. And I don't think you'll find any other bar owner that's gonna be that willing to be that way with you guys in this town, because obviously we got quite an investment here in this property, and we're putting a lot of revenue into this property to get it up to speed. And we're spending a hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of months right now, between scoring equipment and what the beer garden will cost and the improvements we made inside the lounge, and the things we're doing to correct problems that existed in the building already. So we have a huge commitment to want to be successful here, but not at the expense of making the community upset because that's only gonna hurt us down the road. We want to be successful business people in town and make sure it's a place everybody enjoys coming to.
You know, one of the things that we did discuss with the golf course as far as the live entertainment outside, it was only by requested by permit. A request of someone, that's why we put it in, or sort of be fair. And while one may be a little more or less than from other residential property, that was one of the requirements that we gave on the golf course. They, they could have live bands, live entertainment, but it had to be on special events, special request. That was the one thing. Same thing with Basil. As far as the times go.
Now, the key here is we say live music, it's till 11:00. You can still get amplified music out of the stereo.
Right, we're early.
So the jukebox playing afterwards would be a violation of that. Because it's amplified music.
Well, what we asked for was 11:00 to stop the live entertainment and low music.
The ordinance, the ordinance states all amplified music ends at, right now it's 11:00.
Okay, that's not.
There's no time.
No, 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 right now was proposed by the PCC, is 11:00 of all amplified music. A jukebox is amplified music.
I understand.
Okay, I got it.
The planning and zoning committee did not, that's the lawyer talking there, we did not say amplified music. We said live music, meaning a band, okay, so that's lawyer talk.
Actually, the lawyer went one step further, called it, I believe, live entertainment, I remember.
Well, it says outdoor entertainment until 11:00.
Yeah, he threw in the word entertainment to try and cover every aspect, so let's say if you. In other words, we were not opposed to low speaker music going on for an hour.
Yeah, but right now, PCC, just what comes from Tenaska, item number four, outdoor entertainment, bands, et cetera, should be permitted to provide sound directed to the west, ending no later than 11:00 PM. Jukebox is entertainment, so the lawyer didn't go that far.
I'm just telling you what we, as a PCC, what our intent was and what we said, that's not our intent.
And what we requested was that as well.
Hey, I guess, Jack, I'm just. Well, I applaud you for what you're doing with the business, I personally have been in there, and I see a drastic improvement with what's being done there. A couple of concerns I have is with the live music, if there's anyone probably sitting up here that would come and participate in that, it would probably be me. But at the same time, I would have concerns with live music outside. Simply because of the fact I live quite a ways away, we're doing discussions on Quiet Zone studies and stuff like that. I live quite a ways away from the train tracks, and I hear them with my window open. That would be a concern of mine for the residents on Fairway Drive, being as close as they are. If I could hear a train horn a mile and a half away, I'm sure these residents are really gonna be able to hear this live music. And especially when you're talking about continuous, every Saturday night or something like that, I could see that getting old quick for those residents. I don't have so much a problem with the time if there's not live music, if you're talking low, ground speakers, music being played outside. I was here for the request, I was able, was not able to make the actual PCC hearing, but I was here for the request. And I heard some of the things your son had said about, you know, the ideas behind the beer garden and the beanbag tournaments and the leagues and all that. I think those are great, I think they're great ideas, I think they'll be very successful. I just don't know if it's right to kick it up to really being allowing live music outside, especially when we're talking about something that sounded like it could be happening every weekend. I think one of our number one priorities as trustees on this board is to look out for and try to provide a certain quality of life for our residents. And I just see live music out there, as much as I love it myself, I just see a lot of residents having a problem with that, especially as close as some of those houses are. The time, I think 11:00 is appropriate if we're talking about, you know, just a jukebox patched out there with low speakers, you know, just something like that. 11:00 and get everybody inside by midnight, that I really don't have a problem with, but I think the live music would be my downfall on the whole thing.
Totally against live music, John, or the duration, how late it goes?
I think, I think it would, the permit idea, I like that, I just, I mean, like what I heard here is just, you know, from him speaking is the sound of like almost live bands every weekend on a Saturday night or something like that. And I could see that getting real old for the people that live right on Fairway Drive, real close to their. Not to mention the residents right across Route 1, although I think the trucks would probably be louder than the music, but, you know, it's close to some houses, and we're talking about live bands in some of these yard, with not a lot to knock that noise down. I just know how I hear the trains by my house, with a lot of houses in between it to knock it down, they're loud.
Can only imagine a live band.
And I'm probably, I could see if it was every weekend, it's an issue. I probably have less of an issue on weekends, even on every Friday and Saturday, as if you give a blanket eleven o'clock, I mean, you could do it Tuesday night, and if I gotta get up for work the next morning, I would not be happy about having music.
I don't want to keep you up.
Yeah, well, and, and I understand it, like he was saying, if, if a year and a half from now you sold it and we leave this in here, we've kind of granted something that could come back and bite us. I don't think on weekends it's a good idea. Or at least, it would have to be earlier.
Or a special permit.
Or a special permit just for a specific thing, and like if, if it's the night before a holiday and people aren't gonna work the next day, that's different, but...
And that's been discussed, that some of those things should be a permit item, and I have no problems with that.
I think we gotta just not only worry about people having to get up for work the next day, we're talking about people with children.
Right.
That, you know, they're not up at, I mean, where me or you may still be up at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock kind of weekend. I know my kids are in bed at eight thirty on the weekends, school night or not, and, you know, no. I had young kids like that and were close to that, I'd be adamantly against this. I mean, I, I personally would probably be here screaming, don't allow this, don't allow it, but... I, I think the beer garden is a great thing, I, I do, I, I just think the, the live music, I think, you can control music from speakers a lot easier than you can off of a set of drums and a guitar and an amplifier.
Okay, and what times are you talking about?
I, I, the, the times, I...
Just want to clarify, during a weekday, what time would the, by any music outside stop or the beer garden close?
I think, I think the, my, my opinion is, is I would say special, uh, the permit for live entertainment outside, I mean, if you're talking once a month or something like that, great. You know, I don't think it needs to be every week. And I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the time if it's the, for the live music, if it's occasionally. You know, if it's a special occasion, if you have a, a poker run or something, or some sort of charity event or something like that, great. I mean, it's a kind of a unique situation, and it is what it is, I, I think you almost... But I, I think on a regular basis, I think, I don't necessarily have a problem with it if it's not live music. If it's softer music coming out, I don't have a problem with the eleven and twelve o'clock so much on weekends.
Should be eleven o'clock during the week, twelve o'clock on weekends. That's true, just want to make sure you're right.
No, because we started out with eleven o'clock, live music ending.
Guys, I'm just trying to clarify, I want to make sure everybody's on a safe page with times we're talking about, so I'm asking.
I, I don't have a problem with everybody being out of there at midnight on weekends with no live music. On weekdays, I would say, you know, nine, ten o'clock, you need to be on a weekday.
Anybody else? No other suggestions?
Yeah, I would think probably ten o'clock during the week, eleven o'clock Saturday night, latest.
Is that live music or?
Well, okay, how about, how about this? Will everybody agree to, to back a permit for live music? We all agree on that?
Outdoor entertainment.
Outdoor entertainment basically needs a permit. Scott?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yeah.
John? Marcie? Right, okay. Now, we can forget about the permit part, so we're past that. Let's go down to the times, narrow down the time you think you want, and then someone can make the motion if they so pleased.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know, uh, jukebox music toned down, uh... What do we mean by that? Uh, if the band puts that, uh, say ten and then play jukebox music to eleven, and it's toned down, who's gonna...
If I may, we discussed that with the attorney, the police department, to my knowledge, does not have a sound measuring device, correct?
Correct.
So basically, what would have to happen is if the music is too loud with anything other than the band, or even if the band, if it gets too late, someone would have to call the police, they would have to go out there and make a determination. Correct.
That's what we did in the past, back when it was somewhere in time.
So that's how that would be judged. So in other words, if they have it blasting, it's not bothering anybody, nobody's complaining, it could continue. But until, when someone makes the complaint saying I can hear the band, just like if anybody didn't realize it was at seven o'clock, I don't think I've ever heard a train horn that loud in this building. You know, and like you said, and I've never heard it since we've been here. So there's a point of where, depending upon the way the wind is blowing.
Yeah.
And if I can make the correction too, he said that the speakers to the west, I think it should be to the south. There's no residential area, the residential area is farther to the south than it is to the west.
East is what, three hundred feet, that we were determining?
How close was the guy that, um, was...
You don't know how far is his house away?
I, I don't know. I think, I think a lot more than feet, I mean, you're talking a couple hundred yards away. But it's, it's just the way the noise is gonna travel, nothing to break it up before you hit that first house on Fairway Drive on the south side of the street, I mean, it's, it's a couple hundred yards away, you know?
And that's his house, right?
No.
His house isn't the first one? So it's further.
Let's, let's deal with closing time first. We'll break it down. What's an appropriate closing time for the beer garden? I would say midnight on Friday and Saturdays, eleven o'clock, remainder of the night. This is closing now, not the music. This is closing the beer garden.
I, I got a question for the chief. Have you ever really had any complaints about noise outside there, because obviously, there's no smoking allowed inside? People are always going outside there and smoking, right?
Correct.
Have you ever, and they're open though too? Have you ever had any issues with anyone ever calling the police saying that, you know, the people outside smoking are loud or anything like that?
No.
Because I think that's primarily what you're, a lot of the times without live entertainment at night, I think it's prob, probably, you know, we can kind of become a smoker's house a little bit.
Well, it gives them a place to be at as well, but, I mean, there are some entertainers here that are really fantastic and can motivate a crowd without being crazy loud.
Yeah. Okay, I was just curious on that.
I mean, you gotta remember too, uh, how sound carries. And, you know, the, the, when they, you talk about the still of the night. I mean, I can hear the train horns four miles out of town, and other times I can't hear them at all. I can hear the tornado sirens six miles out of town, and sometimes I can't hear them at all. Um, that's a big determining factor is that, in the still of the night factor, as to where that sound's gonna travel. Now, and you got the buildings around here, so where those speakers are pointed, you're gonna get, probably get some ricochet off of some of the buildings.
So, it sounds not your answer, because you're gonna ricochet that stuff north anyways.
And then which way you direct it, unless you've got vegetation that's gonna stop that sound from moving? You're gonna have it bouncing all over the place.
Well, as far as the direction, I think it maybe, it probably would be a work in progress. Then if we found that one way is wrong, I'm sure we'd be able to plan a different way. Maybe direct it out into the golf course.
We did plan, and from the drawing you guys have seen in the past, uh, we planned on making it some, a one-step deck, if you will, on the, the northeast corner, so it'd kind of be facing southwest towards the, the building a little more as well, especially towards the Facebook, which would absorb some sound, not like the block where it would bounce off. So we thought about that when we talked about how we drew this, uh, latest design up with the, uh, landscape gentleman who's gonna do our paving, or to put the papers in, how to try to funnel the sound towards that side of the building, if it bounces off, it's gonna go towards the Dollar Store and high school, not towards any houses. So we took that into consideration when we sat down with him to draw this up.
This is my only, my only concern is we can't, I shouldn't say my only concern, but my main concern is closing it early enough.
Anybody else? Does anyone like to make a motion?
Tell me. Make a motion for twelve o'clock on Friday and Saturday and, uh, ten o'clock on weekdays.
I'll second it.
Motion on four and second.
No, Jeff, I have a question.
Question and discussion.
Is that closing, or is that...
Closing everybody out of it.
Didn't get to that yet, this is just closing? John, I'll make sure, whether you want to amend your motion.
I'll amend it for music and everyone out of there.
Both?
Mm-hmm.
So, John, you're midnight on Friday and Saturday and ten o'clock on weekdays?
I'll still second.
Any more discussion or questions? Everybody know what we're voting on? It's twelve o'clock Friday and Saturday, ten o'clock during the week. Doesn't, it's everybody out, done, over.
But when does the music stop?
He said his motion was ten o'clock during the week and twelve o'clock on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, correct? That's your understanding too, Mike?
Yeah.
The live music, right?
Jukebox music, as you said.
Well, it's everything, it would be everything.
Live music falls under special permit, well, the permit can dictate how long it stays in there.
But that wasn't part of his motion unless he wants to end that now too?
No, I think that the special permit will be decided, the, the request of that special permit will be taken on a case-by-case basis, and I'll leave that to the liquor commissioner and the chief.
I tried to get it in there.
All right, everybody understand it?
So it's ten o'clock during the week, twelve o'clock on the weekends? Friday, Saturday.
To be global. And then basically, the liquor commissioner may have an opinion, that he'll do everything by permit.
But it's Friday, Saturday, it's not on weekends, Friday, Saturday.
Live, live entertainment isn't on the table at all. He just said he's, he's gonna leave that up to me and there's no other motion.
Under the permit.
So forget about the permit. So bottom line, is if we were to allow live entertainment, if the liquor commissioner were so willing to do so, according to his motions, my understanding, ten o'clock during the week, twelve o'clock on the weekends. He's not putting the permit part in his motion.
Correct.
So I'm speaking to you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Okay, so I can clarify it for the minutes because if someone's reading this later on. The closing time for the beer garden, including, I would say, speaker music, not live music, would be midnight on Friday and Saturday and ten PM on weekdays.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's the way the motion was made.
And then a special permit will be required for live music, and that is not part of the motion.
Correct.
So the beer garden closes and the sound goes off at the same time?
Any other questions? Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Whalen?
No.
Say yes.
Okay, now, all you did was vote on the times, now you have to vote on the ordinance itself. Because we didn't sign a number?
Well, you provided guidance on the way this needs to be rewritten. Because right now, you got amplified sound, you need to indicate in the ordinance that any live music will be done via special use permit.
We're going to, we're going to consider the ordinance as amended tonight. And I want to reread the conditions.
Make sure you put that in, that any live music is under special use.
It's already there in number eight. Of the ordinance itself. All right. So, Evan Ordinance, before us tonight, granted a special use permit for a beer garden at six forty-three South Dixie Highway with the following nine conditions. The outdoor seating area shall be completely enclosed by a solid fence with access through a gate, controlling address, address as depicted in the application. Accessed outdoor seating area should be handicapped accessible. No banners or out, this is number three, no banners or outdoor advertising may be placed on the outside of required fencing enclosing the outdoor seating area. Number four, outdoor lighting shall be LED with a downward cast to avoid off-site glare. Number five, no glass bottles or containers shall be permitted in the outdoor seating area. Number six, the outdoor seating area shall close no later than ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and twelve midnight, Friday and Saturday. Number seven, all amplified sound shall cease no later than ten PM on Sunday through Thursday, midnight, Friday and Saturday. Number eight, outdoor live entertainment may be permitted for special events upon application to an approval by the liquor commissioner with the advice of the chief of police, based on the circumstances presented ongoing operations of the business. Number nine, all sound shall otherwise comply with village regulations related to noise. That would be the conditions and specialties. But before we vote on this, we should hear from the petitioner what, what you think of what you're discussing here tonight, before we vote on this, do you want to make any comments?
Well, just the, the gate thing, the access is actually gonna come through the door in the bowling alley. It's not gonna, the gate's gonna be there for emergency purposes.
That's correct.
But you have, the way you read it, that the entrance, egress and exit is gonna cap it through that gate. That's not true, it'll come through the bowling alley. So, we have control over who gets admitted to that bowling alley, nobody's opening a gate and letting them in.
Okay.
We plan on putting a gate on the east side against the wall, which will take us back out to the refuse area to get rid of garbage. Then we'll have one towards the front end, should the police have to pull up and get in in a hurry or fire department or anything. We'll make sure there's ways for everybody to get in, but it's gonna be controlled, the access is gonna be controlled through that door in the bowling alley going into the beer garden.
And I think that's the intent here. The PZC doesn't know the liquor rules, and, and the liquor rules are you have to enter the bar through one access point anyway. You can't have eight access points to it. You just can't control that kind of environment, so that's the way I would understand it, is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding, for emergency, that's the only...
For emergency.
And the only other thing that, I, I'm not sure, you're saying ten o'clock and twelve o'clock, nobody can step foot in the beer garden, or can I let the smokers go outside with no noise to smoke out there, so I don't have to chase cigarette butts up and down the street and I'll have them in one area?
My understanding is ten o'clock, twelve o'clock, it's closed.
Okay, so then they'll be...
So they'll be standing out in front.
They'll be standing out in front then, that's what I was trying to avoid, just so people don't congregate around the doorway. Not that it's been a problem, but it's just, it's not appealing.
I, I, I thought about that when I made the motion, throughout all this. And the idea of it is, is that patrons cannot go outside and bring their alcohol and sit there for forty-five minutes and have a cigarette. If they go outside to have a cigarette, they're leaving a beer bottle on the bar, and they're going out and having their cigarette and coming back in. I think if, if we were to allow that for smoking with no, I, I think we'd still end up with people congregating out there till bar closes.
I agree, I agree. I just want to give them a place once it shuts down. You want to have a cigarette, go outside, you don't have to travel through the bowling alley, go out the doors. Instead, you're right in the bar area still.
And the same as it's always been, but like I said, the idea of that is that if they go out and have a smoke, which I'm a smoker, you know, if I'm there and I have to have a cigarette, I'm not gonna go outside and sit there because I would be likely to sit out there for an hour and drink my whole beer and...
Well, not if we don't let you out the door with it.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm saying if there was a beer garden.
Right.
So, yeah.
So that's it, and they can't go outside after ten o'clock or twelve o'clock onto that patio area to smoke a cigarette?
That's correct. That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
Okay, where are we at? Or I just read this order. Motion for an ordinance, let's see ordinance number.
Roll call.
I'll make a motion approving ordinance number twelve twenty-four, granting a special use permit for a beer garden at Pitt and Tannehill.
Motion on four, is there a second? There is a second, any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
No.
Coleman?
No.
Hepburns?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Clary?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, it's passed, I have your building permit application here, but I understand you want to read papers and that's...
We are gonna do papers, I think.
So I'll give this back to you, and I will reply tomorrow with the papers, that's gonna reduce, reduce the price. And I hope the petitioners realize that if in fact these hours do not work, that the vote like will probably be scaled back, we will just be scaling that in the future. And all you're doing is applying for a fence now.
Right.
Item number four, Pitt and Tannehill LED sign update, the petitioner is requesting that the hearing be continued until July twenty-eighth, meeting with PZC. Item number five, request for variance in front yard setback at Goldie Auto Body. The petitioner had decided to withdraw this request and to extend the fence only up to the front of building one. So no motion is needed. In the nursing home, Feature Manor is looking to expand. Yesterday is that Feature Manor has applied for an extension of their building to include a rehab center, rec room, and a new entrance off Church Road. to include a rehab center, rec room, and a new entrance off Church Road. Review and annexation agreement and site plan indicated that this proposal is, is in substantial performance with the special use permit granted to the nursing home by the village board after hearing in two thousand. So all the requests is approval for the site plan by the PZC and the village board, and that will be presented at the PZC meeting on May twentieth. And that ends my report.
Just one other comment. We need to probably sit down and have a meeting to discuss the liquor commissioner portion of it, see if there's gonna be any further restrictions on that.
I'm sorry.
Liquor commissioner portion of the, your license for the outdoor.
Okay.
We still need to have a meeting to discuss that part of it.
Well, that might keep you quiet.
What would say to me, trustee Coleman?
Yeah, Police Department Monthly Report is enclosed through your review. As is the code before one monthly report, is also enclosed. Chief, any comments on traffic or study, studies of traffic?
Um, I've enclosed in the report the results of a traffic study that was performed over there between Gould and Elliott on Penfield Street. We had a request from a resident there for some sort of traffic control, whether it be a four-way stop or a, a, some sort of signage. Her concern was the cars that are speeding, traveling eastbound on Penfield as they come from the west, because there, there is a, a hill there. And, and according to the, the, the speed survey, what we look at, I've, I've got three different measures of speed for eastbound and westbound. One is the average speed, that's taking all the cars that go eastbound, adding up and dividing by the number of cars, that gives you an average speed. The median speed is the middle number, you got the same, uh, set of numbers above and below that median number. And then the one we look at is the eighty-fifth percentile. That's eighty-five percent of all the cars traveling, are traveling at that speed. Now, it used to be thirty, it does have a posted limit of twenty-five, it is twenty-five, and if you look at the eighty-fifth percentile on eastbound, it's twenty-eight point six miles an hour. And for westbound, it was twenty-nine point two. That's not, I mean, that doesn't raise a big concern to me, it does raise concern that there is an increase in speeding in that area. However, we've only had two traffic crashes in the last five years for that area. So, we look at what warrants a traffic control sign, and I don't have anything that would warrant a four-way stop for that location. For those reasons, because there is a daycare, because there is a park in close proximity, I would recommend the installation of signs that say, "Slow Children Plane."
You probably put the line person sign.
Yep.
Is there a line person sign there too, isn't there? The, the resident lives in the business district, technically, correct?
That's correct.
But there is a daycare center. So the Slow Children Plane, I guess, is- It is the business district.
Excuse me, chief, would this be posted on all four corners, or just on-
Just for east and westbound traffic on Penfield. That's where the concern is. Plus, you, you have stop signs that intersect with Penfield. So if you, if you're coming down Gould, there's actually, you got two stop signs. You got one over on Hodges and one at Penfield.
Um, any announcement on bicycle rodeo, or is that coming up this year, or?
Yes, they do, the bicycle rodeo is, we're gonna hold that, it's gonna be Saturday, May thirtieth. Registration will begin at eight-thirty. Uh, the bike rodeo will begin at nine A.M. We're gonna hold it again at Fireman's Parking Lot there, seven-eleven Penfield Street. The rodeo is open to all kids, thirteen years and younger. We've got two grand prizes, we got a new girl's bike and a new boy's bike. Donuts and juice will be served. So we're gonna, we're gonna hold this event rain or shine, and there will be other prizes that we'll be awarding during the rodeo.
That is chief?
Uh, the only other thing I have is, Will County EMA is hosting, um, a CERT class. And what CERT is, is a Community Emergency Response Team. That just teaches if a citizen wants to become a CERT member. It's an, it's not instructed to establish a team, but to provide great citizen emergency response training. There's two days, you have to attend both classes, and they're eight-hour classes. It'd be Saturday, June sixth, and Saturday, June thirteenth, from eight A.M. to five P.M. And that's held out in Joliet. And I will have, uh, we can put this information on our website or distribute it for anyone who wants to register. They have to register with Will County EMA. And, oh, I'm sorry, it'll be held at the EMA Training Garage, one sixty-eight forty-one West Laraway Road in Joliet. It's only open to twenty participants, the first twenty that sign up are in.
Okay, chief, any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
I would work for me, trustee Coleman.
Water Department Monthly Report and Sewer Department Monthly Reports are both proposed for review. Water, water billing register for the months of March and April are also proposed for review. We did see a reflection somewhat of some of the recent things that have been addressed. Water loss, um, we did see water pump drop by three million gallons, which is somewhat of a positive thing, you know, especially for when it was found in a short amount of time that it would actually reflect. Curious to see where, where it lands, you know, going forward, I know that we, this is just a, really a bad play on words, but a drop in the bucket, but it's a start. Any, any, anytime you're dealing with something like this, you know, stepping in the right direction is a good step, so hopefully continue that pace. Leak detection update, buddy, I mean, you have anything else that you-
Um, other than, like I said, it's, it's a work in progress, I'm working the grid system. I'm probably gonna be, after I'm done with Linden Circle area, I'm gonna hit, uh, the Castle Town or Prairie Park area. I don't think we've really ever concentrated on any of that. Things said, and then working our way back down, I'd like to get everything from north to the middle. And then we're gonna hit Prairie Crossings really hard, and we'd have to do a lot of digging there from the B-box that run over, but, you know, like I said, it's gonna be labor intense. That's where we're at with that.
Alright. Uh, number five, consider an ordinance increasing the water rate by one dollar per thousand gallons to be used exclusively for water main repairs. And a high-capacity charge of an additional one dollar per thousand gallons for any usage over thirty thousand gallons in a billing cycle for operations and maintenance. This ordinance was discussed, uh, pretty, pretty well at length at, uh, two meetings ago. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the last meeting, so I asked that this be table till I could be here. Again, I, I, I realize this is not gonna be a popular move by any means, but it's a move that needs to be made. We have deteriorating water mains, especially on the west side of town. This needs to be addressed. We can't keep putting Band-Aids on our problems, we gotta fix them. And the only way to fix it is to come up with the revenue to fix it. This is the entire village's water system, I think every resident owns their part of it. And I think it's time that we, we start, we, we have to, we have to charge more. We've had studies, we've had audits, we've had our auditors sit here and tell us we're undercharging for water. We look at studies done through the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association that show with communities like ours and around us, that we are, um, charging basically the least. We, we need to, it's not gonna be a popular decision, but it's something we need to do because it's the only way we're gonna keep, we're gonna be able to fix our water mains. And the only way that I am okay with this is the fact that every dollar extra that, that this brings in is going into the water main replacement account, is not going into the water fund. It will be in its own account. Currently, we're, with, once we, with the loan that we're taking to do Penfield, which is well on track, we're looking at about thirty-eight thousand dollars a year being set aside for water mains for the next thirty years. It's not enough, we need more money to do this. And this is not, like I said, it's not gonna be a popular decision, but it's a decision that has to be made. Did any other trustees or anything have any questions or comments to this?
How are you gonna calculate the sewer, water, water going in the sewer? Say, for instance, if you do a, uh, lawn sprinkler, then you get charged for the water. Is that water, you're gonna get charged sewer rate to for that?
No, we said that there's no increase to the sewer rate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
This is strictly water rate.
I wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, ordinance.
Sorry, twelve twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve twenty-five, increasing the water rate by one dollar per thousand gallons to be used exclusively for water main repairs. And a high-capacity charge of an additional one dollar per thousand gallons for any usage over thirty thousand gallons in a billing cycle for operations and maintenance.
Second. Is a motion or a form of a second, any other questions or discussions? Roll call.
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Hepburns?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes my report. Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Brian for, I know this is his last one, but, um, past two years, Brian has been my co-chair with this committee, and, um, you'll be missed. Thank you for help, guidance, and, and support throughout this. We've had a long two years with a lot of issues that we've dealt with, you know, a lot of time. And I, I, I know that, understand that, and I appreciate it, and for the resident, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Economic Development, trustee Mark.
Those president and administrator met with John Grueling last week and discussed within the future Bane Lumber and the golf course. They also talked about truck traffic being generated by the intermodal and the need to move truck traffic east-west through the county. It's kind of an annual session, every year we meet with John Grueling, and, uh, he talks about things that Will County CED is doing for us. Just a point, in the past, I think sometimes there had been a perception that Will County CED maybe didn't do so much for us out here in eastern Will County, or particularly in feature, because we're so small, and most of the development had gone out west. I did not get a chance to meet this year, but I met with them last year, and I really hadn't had a clear idea of what they do. And they actually do spend a lot of time lobbying downstate, they go to Washington, D.C. Trying to put Will County on the map, trying to make everyone realize that we are a transportation hub out here. So they're doing things on a, a much larger scale as opposed to, you know, bringing a warehouse someplace. So I think, um, the investment we do with them is a good idea. I, I, I sometimes had my doubts several years back, but, um, after seeing what they really do, they do do a lot for Will County, and, you know, I trickle down when it comes to Will County, it comes here, so. He was basically asking us for our one thousand dollar per year, uh, membership to Will County CED, and we can either, you know, come up with it every year, or put it in as part of the regular bills. But we do budget that about every year.
We don't talk.
We don't.
We make them come in here.
You might, you might see this on YouTube, but-
That's it.
That's the end of my report.
End of my report, uh, as we, we all knew last week, Bob and I, and Jeanette, we're in Springfield. And once again, we met with the governor on two different occasions this time. And really, his sales speech still hasn't changed. Uh, we did meet with some of the legislators, one of which was Troy Hodgson, the other one, I can't remember his name.
Oh, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
But, uh, encouraging is, is what they had indicated, is they were not in favor of reducing of any of the LGDF funds. They felt the votes were not there. So in spite of what the governor has indicated that he may do, they don't feel the vote's there, but that's still going to be seen. Uh, we also met with DCEO, which, Bob, you gotta help me on that one. Department of-
Congress, they can have it.
That too. Uh, we met with the head of that, Illinois Department of Transportation, and Illinois Department of Natural Resources, which Department of Natural Resources, like we've governed the-
Five grants?
Yes. So we had some discussion about car grants with them, uh, as well as IDOT streamlining, uh, once again, the, uh, MFT money, uh, and the CEO, I don't know if you called it, discussed with them.
DCEO is in the process of privatizing the agency. And there's a lot of flux there, they really don't know what's gonna happen. They're gonna try to be more like John Grueling's group and not part of the state.
And as we've heard before, as the governor keeps pushing his resolution that he wants municipalities to, to adopt, I certainly am not in the favor of ordering that he's trying to encourage us to, to do. For one, I'm not in favor of doing, um, what do they call them, carte blanche, or whatever you wanna call it, they give us the wording, and we fill it out, we send it, and I always believe in changing something anyways, but I'm not in favor of what he's proposing. In any event, the associations are trying to come up with a generalization, uh, resolution that the boards could be willing to pass in support of fixing Illinois. Maybe not necessarily the specific items that he's, he's trying to attack. Quiet Zone update, when we were in Springfield, we also met with our engineers, we received some encouraging words that basically that the, as I think was already reported, uh, the cost of the reconstruction of the, um, crossings may not be as much as we originally thought going back a couple of years. But once again, we're, we're being cautious because we don't have the report yet. They wanted to make sure that the numbers appeared to be accurate, and they would give the report to us, which we hope they have by the end of the week.
That's correct. Getting back to the lobbying, we saw the governor twice that day. Once in the morning, once in the afternoon. And the afternoon, he actually walked in, on the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, just walked right into the room, and sat in the circle and talked. And, and I've never seen a city governor actually do that. You know, this guy is very accessible. Now, you might not like what you're hearing, but at least he's there to tell you. And he's not afraid to, he, he said, you wanna throw it to me, then go ahead. But this is what I think is best, and, and he's been staying on message pretty clear through the entire time, his tone, and, and the message hasn't changed with him. But yet, when you meet with Colleton and Mattigan, they're saying, nah, that ain't gonna happen, so.
And we met, the lieutenant governor also came down and talked to us, which was the first time. I haven't ever even met the lieutenant governor for the eight years that we've been doing, that I've been doing this. So she even came down and talked to us a little bit, she's in charge of the, um, streamlining a government task force, I guess you could call it. And we made some discussion there about, you know, be careful of what you're streamlining, because like in our case, we feel very well with our township. So if they were talking about eliminating townships, maybe in heavily populated areas where there's no unincorporated property, maybe it'll work, but maybe out here, farther south Illinois, may not work. And they assured us that basically those items would be, you know, well discussed in the future before anything they decide on anything. Yeah, I believe that is it under my report until new business. Is there any other old business?
Just wanna get it over.
Well, then, front and center. I was gonna candy squeeze that one.
Yeah.
Eight years ago, trustee Cleary and I both ran at the same time, and this report was successful. And I'll never forget today that as we were out campaigning, and I was in front of my house, I see this gentleman walking towards me, of course, you see the bright light from the sun shining. Truthfully, he had hair back then. And as he's approaching me, he decided to cross the other side of the street. Oh, Brian, you don't have to cross the other side of the street no more. You're welcome at my house, you're welcome at our meetings, you're welcome in the village hall. And as was already said earlier, uh, I don't think anybody realized and how much of a contribution you were gonna make over these past years, and we all, all really appreciate it, and I would like to award you this. Thank you. Did you get it, Tom?
Yeah.
We got it. Okay.
You have to get Greg's big smile.
Watch his shining head too, so.
Uh, two shakes. There's your, uh, piece of wood. And with that, the last, the knowledge per per square inch, our new trustee, Mike Faison.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Frank Basil Jr.
I, Frank Basil Jr.
Having been elected to the office of trustee.
Have been elected to the office of trustee.
In the village of feature.
In the village of feature.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee.
The office of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And trustee Basil, if you would mind sitting where trustee Clary was sitting. And before we do that, can we have a picture of the fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen village board with Marcy and Brian? Just for history, could we do that before we let him go?
Yeah.
No.
Can I fit everybody in either?
At least it's by the American flag, I guess. Now, we don't have a picture with Marcy and you in, in, on that board, just for history.
Throw a stick at it.
I don't think we have a picture with people who are involved.
Hey, I went to the, um, Jeff Beck place. I went to the devil, I, a couple of kids were trying to stupidly say. Talked to the lady, she says, I was gonna take this to Paul. Just graduated from my school.
What do you think, someone was trying to steal him?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Should we balance this out, you know, trustees on either side?
There, looks official, look official.
Yeah, that's like a, a thorn among the roses.
Get him while he's smiling.
I got Bob's back.
There you go.
Barry, one of us.
You have a good one?
I hope so.
Frank will be on the block, alright.
Right.
Centipede, Frank.
You guys stay.
Oh, yeah, wait.
Yeah, don't move.
Does that look blurry?
Alright, Frank.
We need to get a better camera.
Whiter, whiter lens. Try to get under it. Now you can go home. And those long Saturdays in March. Under new business, if I just wanna bring up one thing, on the, at least for me, is, May twenty-eighth at six PM, there is a South Suburban Mayors and Managers meeting in Olympic Fields at the Olympic Fields Country Club. Bob is not able to make it, if any of you want to attend, I'll be going, if any of you would like to attend, who do you need to? Uh, please let me know, I'll add your name to the list, and then we'll make arrangements to go there, and we'll see what that meeting is all about. Again, it's May twenty-eighth, uh, six PM, so we probably leave here by fifteen-ish, and that's the Olympic Fields Country Club.
That's P and G, that makes sense, by principle.
Any other new business? If not, I also left in front of you the committee appointments that I wish to make tonight, and I'll go through them and I'll read them. Mayor pro tem or village president pro tem, Scott Whaling, as is done in the past. Finance and Administration Committee would be chaired by Marcy Meyer and co-chair by Jonathan Capores. Public Safety Committee would be Ron Coleman chaired, co-chair by Gail Aaron. Public Works Committee, Jonathan Capores, co-chaired by Frank Basil. Economic Development and Community Relations Committee Chair Frank Basil, co-chair Marcy Meyer. Public Buildings and Properties Parks and Recreation chaired by Scott Whaling, co-chaired by Ron Coleman. Planning, Building and Zoning, trustee Gail Aaron, and co-chair by Scott Whaling. The ESDA Coordinator would be Robert Barber. Village Administrator and zoning administrator and economic development would be also Robert Barber. Jeanette Connor would be our village clerk. Village Prosecutor would be Tom Caduth. Corporate Counsel would be Tim Kuiper, Austin and Kuiper. Tim Kuiper of Austin and Kuiper. Village Treasurer would be Kim Kowinski. Deputy Treasurer would be Don Rooney. Code Enforcement Honor would be Aaron Decord, and the IML delegate would be myself, delegate, would be Greg Samansky. Hopefully, everybody would agree and someone would make a motion. Second, made, and there was a second. Any questions in the motion, roll call.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Heperos?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
As far as the other commission or appointments, I wasn't ready to make them tonight. Uh, just one other common plan, Sauer of the Planning and Zoning Commission has asked not to be reappointed, so there is an opening. Uh, I do have someone in mind, uh, if you have anybody else in mind that you'd like to let me know, please do so, and I'll take that under consideration. Uh, but like I said, I have not heard back from the individual that I have asked, so, but if you have another name, one way or the other, I can take that under consideration as well. Okay? Any other questions? Emotion adjourned.
It's on move.
And second, questions in the motion, roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Heperos?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
The next meeting will be the second Monday in June, but we canceled the Memorial Day meeting.
Our next one's canceled.
Yeah.